We've got 10:15, so I'll go ahead and call our regular Commissioners' Court meeting to order. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Public comments? Do we have public comments?
There's none.
None? Next item is the approval of minutes. I don't know if you all have had a chance to look through them or...
President, do you want to move to approve, Your Honor?
I second your honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion? All in fair, please, aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is vendor's list, Mr. Pettis.
We reviewed the vendor list and recommend it be approved.
Moved in second to approve, discussion? All in fair, please, aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is claims, Mr. Pettis.
Yes, sir, again, we reviewed the claims and we recommend it be approved.
Motion to approve, Your Honor?
Moved in second to approve, discussion? All in fair, please, aye. Oppose? Motion carries. If the court would allow me, I'd like to skip to item number eight. And this is on the audit. I know Mr. Gonzalez and his staff probably have, I'm sure, have other things to do. Mr. Gonzalez, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Lloyd. Judges, Commissioners, we're here to present the audit for September 30th, 2019. Before I start, I would like to introduce my staff, Lieutenant Robles and Melissa and Yarida. And Melissa, she's out of town, so she wasn't going to be here. So I'm going to, I know that we got priorities to present, which is the internal bridge and the gas, but I'm just going to use one because most of the information of the gas and the bridge are all together into one. Okay? And now I would be skipping from place to place, okay?
Okay.
You all have a copy of the report?
Yes.
Yeah. I'd like to go to page 135.
135?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah. Is that mic on?
It's not 135.
I don't have a 1, we don't have a 135.
You don't have 135?
No, it goes from 134 to 136.
Fine, okay. Now I have one.
They don't have page 135, so do I need to re-cop this for them so they can follow?
Okay, let me tear this off. All right. (Inaudible). Basically, on page 35, it's a summary of the report. It basically is, it gives you, we'll give you an un, an un, an modified opinion, unmodified, which is a clean opinion. We didn't find any findings, it says summarized on the page. So basically, the report is, it's very clean and we can go on. When we get the, the page, we'll go over it. All right? So can I continue? What I want to go over is, will be page 19.
19?
19. Okay.
Basically, this is your business type funds, which is on a bridge. Basically, what is your revenues and expenditures? On the bridge, the revenue was $2,400,000 and your expenditures were $1,020,000. So you were, you had an operating income of $1,208,000 and other expenses. So your income before contribution was $792,000 and we transferred to the county half a million. So you had an increase in your net position of $292,000. And last year, balance was 1.2, so your fund balance for that one is $2,400,000. And if you can see on the other ones, you have the gas, $1,000,000 of revenues, expenditures of $940,000. It's an income of $81,000 and you transferred to $10,000. So your fund balance is still, on that one, you're having a negative fund balance, so you reduced it by the 73. So you made profit also. On the transfer station, you have, you have income of 1.5 and expenditure of 1.6, which results in a negative of 77. But basically, the 77 is, because 126 is depreciation, so basically, you're doing okay there too. And on that one, it decreased your fund balance to $55,000. So basically, your fund, your business type funds are okay. Unless you have any questions, Lloyd.
Any questions?
And if anyone to turn to page 18? It's a summary of the financial statement of the assets, of the assets of the funds. And if you can see your net position at the very end is the $2,437,000. And the other ones are negatives because you have always been in the hole, but you're getting out of the hole. With time, you'll be okay. So your business type financial statements are fine? Is there any questions? Just...
Just an explanation for the people that might be watching or hearing.
Yes.
On the gas, the reason we were in the hole is that when we combined the gas, well, take it back. When we separated the gas and the transfer station, they were in the red and all the negative went to the gas.
Yeah.
So they also assumed some of the negative that the transfer station, at that time, it was a landfill that they had. So that's the reason, but we're getting out of it by the...
Yeah. The next thing I want to go by to go over would be on page, page 17? Basically, what I like to see is you make your budget at the beginning of the year and you increase or decreases during the year. So you've got to stay within your budget. If you can see, the revenues that you had were a positive of $916,000 in the middle of the page. And then, and we also have other financing sources, would be like the loan proceeds and transfers from the funds. So anyway, your revenues were a positive of $546,000. And your expenditures were minus $252,000. So you had a positive on your budget of $194,000. So even though without the numbers, I think you did a wonderful job because you stayed within the budget. The only places where you need some help would be on your taxes because you were short $372,000 on your collections. So maybe that's where you should try and see what went wrong and...
Yeah, on that one also, what happened, I had budged it that we would collect 87%, and we only collected 86. So now, you know, I project 86, so that should be fixed for the next item.
Yeah. Anyway, this is, this is on the general fund. Now, if we can turn to page, page 15? Am I going too fast or am I okay? Very simple, I wanted to make it simple. On page 15, we have a statement of revenue and expenditures. But I'm going to concentrate basically on the general fund, which is the most important one. If you can see, your revenues were $17,355,533. And your expenditures were $19,000,000. So you had a negative of $1,466,000. But you had loan issues of loans of half a million. You have a settlement of $329,000 and transfers from other funds, which you were transferred 1.6. So you had an increase on your fund balance also of $201,000. So you're, again, you did okay on your general fund. And the rest, unless you want me to go over the rest of the...
Probably the road and bridge for the Commissioners, because that's the budget that they use, the road and bridge.
The road and bridge?
Yes. Yeah, I think it's right next to the general.
A road and bridge, yeah. On the road and bridge, if you can see, the revenues were 5.7,000 and the expenditures was 5.5. So you had an increase of revenues or expenditures of $163,000. But since you have a negative fund balance, you decreased your fund balance by $163,000.
Any questions?
No, sir, have you?
Well, that echo you got there, I mean, can you hear it today or it's even worse? Might as well turn the mic off.
It's our mic. Okay, we'll try without the mic.
Can I take it off?
I think they'll turn it on. It had a humming sound.
Okay. But he was asking me about the road and the bridge. And I tell him there was, the revenues were 1.7,000 and the expenditures was 5.5.
5.5? We had a revenue of 1.5?
No, 5.7.
5.7.
5, well, no, exactly, it would be $5,720,000.
And the expenditure?
And the expenditure was $5,556,000.
So we had a surplus.
We had a surplus.
But we had a red, the 1.2, so we lowered down our thing to 1.1.
You had a red, you've been, you've been in the red, but you did okay this year. So what I'm, what I see is, without, you know, having current numbers, you did very well. Did you hear the other ones, Lloyd?
Yeah, that's all right.
Okay. And if you can turn to page 12? I'll go for the general fund also. Your total assets is $17,818,000. And your liabilities are $10,429,25. So you have a fund balance of $7,395,817, which is okay. Usually, what we want to do is have at least three months, three months surplus, since your expenditures are almost $19,000,000. So you have, you should have about $6,000,000 on your fund balance and you have $7,000,000. So you're all right there too. And basically, the other things that I wanted to go over would be... It'd be on page 32. And just, what I like to see sometimes is, what do we have, the money and the equipment of the land? And what do we owe? So page 32, what we show is, is you have assets of $87,000,000. And then your accumulated depreciation is 26,000. So you have, for fixed assets, of $60,000,000. And then... And on page 31? What you owe is only $1,111,000. You can see on 31, this is what you owe. And then, and then the other thing that you, what I want to make sure that you do have is, how much cash do you have in the bank? And altogether with all the interest that you have, about $13,000,000. It is on page 29. So we want to make sure that you, that money is safe and secured. So to me, let this year on your, on the way you make decisions, you did very well. The only problem that I see, Lloyd, or also Lloyd's and everybody else, is your accounting staff is very short. You're going to have a lot of problems. I cannot see the stress that you have, your accountants doing. They're trying to catch up, but they'll never catch up. The workload is too much and you only have one part-time CPA and then maybe two or three accountants. There's no way they can make it. So you're always going to be behind. So I'm recommending you hire someone full-time and more staff. Because you probably, without the numbers, current numbers, I mean, you did a wonderful job because you're in the black. But I don't know what the future holds and you've got to have current numbers. And there's no way with those, the people that you have and your staff, you can get the numbers, Lloyd. Both Lloyd's and everybody else.
Yeah, and we are working on that, you know. That office does not fall under the hospice of the Commissioners' Court as the district judges.
Yeah.
So, you know, we have limited say in what goes on there.
But Lloyd, Star County is growing.
Yes.
It's growing.
I agree with you 100%. I agree with you. But, you know, all the court can do is offer more personnel, more help, but we cannot hire anyone.
Because what happens, if you don't have current numbers, you're probably going to lose some funding. You need to have your numbers up to date.
Yeah, no, I agree.
If I may address that, we have already hired an additional member in the office, full-time. And we are contracting some part-time jobs to get us caught. My firm believes that we are caught up with the staff that we have.
But I think you need, I mean, I hate to be working in your department because of all the stress, the overtime. To me, your staff needs to have time for their children to be with them. (Inaudible). I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I don't disagree, but we are addressing that situation.
Okay. Lloyd did, I mean...
What can we do? I mean, we're already three years behind and, you know...
Yeah.
And we're going to stay, I think, for a long time.
Yeah. But I think what you need to do is hire another firm to catch up.
Well, I just want to tell the judge that it might be some firms out there can come and take over the whole deal and do it on a contractual basis, I mean.
No, I don't, I think you should have it within, I feel that within yourself, you just have to have the people to do it. But to catch up, you can do that.
But that's what I'm saying, you know.
Right now, we're contracting to get us caught up. Hiring somebody full-time is going to need some training. What we're hiring is already trained, we don't have to train them, so it's going to be faster than hiring somebody full-time. Once we're, once we're caught up with the training, we're going to be hiring additional staff. But we've already hired one additional staff.
Oscar, changing the subject just a little bit. You know, I'm just leafing through the report. Did anything jump at you as far as, see, I'm always concerned about staying in, within budget.
Yeah.
That every department stays within budget.
Yes.
Anything jumped out at you that...
No, but the only one that was off was the, as you can see on that same, that's why I went to the budget the first time. Well, the only one said general administration was overspent by $600,000.
The general administration?
Yeah, administration. That's the only department that was off.
Okay.
Yeah.
What page is that on?
It's on page 17.
Is there, is there a detail where it will show where in general administration?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to get together and show it to you.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the other, and then the revenue was on the property taxes, you explained that one already.
Yes.
Yeah. But otherwise, you did, you did very well.
Okay. Any questions? You know, I really was scared to death about this one, the 2019 audit.
Yeah.
Because we were not doing very well, 2018, 19. Since then, things should get even better, I hope.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Oscar, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to approve the audit report. Any further discussion? All in fair, please, aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, I believe we have a couple of proclamations that, you know, we'd like to take care of. The first one would be the Mental Illness Awareness Week.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Cassandra Lopez. I am the CAPS Program Administrator, Assistant Program Administrator in Starr County. We want to present to you the two proclamations that we have upcoming this week. We have the Down Syndrome and we have the Mental Illness. We will be celebrating the Down Syndrome Awareness Month in a drive-by tomorrow at the clinic, followed by our Mental Illness Awareness Week celebration at the Escuadus Community Center during our mental health meeting. This will be our fourth mental health meeting. And we do, we do hold them every second Wednesday of every month. You all are more than welcome to go, Judge and Commissioners, if you would do the honor of attending. And we have been meeting for four consecutive months already.
I believe you have the proclamations in your packet. Is there a motion to approve? Both of you, please, sir?
Yeah. Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion? All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And again, we thank you for the work that you all do for the people that need the help.
Yes, and thank you. Like I said, you all are more than welcome to join us tomorrow. We will be having those two celebrations in honor of mental illness awareness and Down Syndrome. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Tomorrow, our mental health meeting is from 12 to 1:00. And our drive-by for the Down Syndrome is at the clinic at 10:00 a.m.
The red ribbon didn't, oh, okay. The next proclamation that we have is a Red Ribbon Week.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We want to thank you for having us here today. We also want to thank you, Judge Vera, for filming the proclamation that we were able to string for our coalition meeting, which Ms. Cynthia Fuentes is the Secretary of our this year's Starr County Community Coalition. So thank you, Ms. Fuentes, for all that you do. The proclamation that we did send you is going to be celebrated all through Starr County, especially the CISDs, next week, the 23rd through the 31st. So we are seeing some trends that are going on here in Starr County. What does the coalition do? We try to prevent the use and misuse of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. We are seeing an emerging trend with vaping in the school districts. We are actually out there giving presentations at Rio High School, Bruja High School these last weeks and all through the month of October. Why? Because they are getting caught, multiple cots during the day with vapes and cartridges. They are testing positive for THC, CBD, and tobacco nicotine. So they reached out to us and let us know this is a trend that's going on, as well as several juvenile probation youth tested positive for meth. So we are seeing emerging trends in our county. So that is why we reached out to you, so you could be active and proactive on this case, so you can know what's going on. So we want to thank you for all you do. We also have our Starr County Community Coalition meeting every Wednesday, the first Wednesday of every month. Ms. Cynthia Fuentes intends that on your behalf and spreads any information we have for you, so we're thankful for that too. But if anytime you would like to join in, it's via Zoom to the convenience of everybody that's working. So Ms. Veronica will go ahead and tell you a little bit about the Red Ribbon Week.
Thank you again. Good morning, Judge and esteemed Commissioners. So with the Red Ribbon Proclamation, you know, as, when we talk to our kiddos, this has been going on since the 1990s. But it actually started in 1985 with the death of Agent Enrique Camarena. So he was stationed in Mexico and unfortunately, he lost his life. And since then, you know, his family in remembrance, in honor of his belief that one person can make a difference, started forming these Camarena Clubs, eventually gained national attention. And now, today, we celebrate it nationwide. Again, as Ms. Marie stated, this is celebrated October 23rd through the 31st. So what we are doing is, we will not only be talking about Red Ribbon, you know, thankfully, Judge Vera was able to provide us with a recording that we will be sharing with our kiddos, you know, to remind them that they are an integral part of Red Ribbon Week. You know, we honor him and his sacrifice throughout any activity that we do. And we will be doing presentations throughout the week, which we will be doing in person as well as virtual. And we always invite our community, you know, this is a coalition, a community coalition. And we ask for your presence and support. And we're so thankful that you have been supporting us. Ms. Cynthia has been an integral part in our community to help address alcohol, tobacco, and other drug issues. And again, we thank you and invite you all to any presentations that we have. Do you all have questions?
The only thing is on the Zoom meetings... The only thing is on the Zoom meetings, I guess Cynthia would know, so she can keep reminding me to get them. But I will try and attend some of them.
Thank you so much.
And again, we thank you also for the work that you do in our community, especially with our kids.
Yes.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Yes. Thank you. This is the Mental Health and Syndrome. And this are the two proclamations, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we can go back to our reports. Is there anyone else that needs to come before the court at this time? If not, we'll go back to our regular agenda. Gas Department?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
The report is before you. If you have any questions, let me know, but Gas Department has been doing really well as far as our expenses and our purchases. Like I said, the report is before you.
Any questions, comments? Do you want to go into the transfer station?
Yes, sir. And also, the report is before you. This month, we do have a deficit of $5,661.97. We should catch up next month when we... It shouldn't... We shouldn't have this problem next month.
Any questions?
Thank you all.
Tax Collector?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. My report for this month is going to be a little bit different than the prior reports. Today, I am presenting you with the tax collection, also with the Motor Vehicle Department, and also with the Special Inventory, all three reports. First of all, I want to present to you the Tax Office Report. Do you have it in front of you? In the past, I haven't reported what was being collected through the motor vehicle, and I feel it's important for you all to know that we also have that revenue coming and the collections we do for that other department. Okay? Proceed to the report. It's the total countywide collections for September of 2021 were $424,648.38. In September of 2020, they were $361,788.65. There was a total collection of $62,869.73, more than last year. Our total delinquent collections for September of 2021, just for Starr County, were $268,122.15. The total delinquent collections in September of 2020 were $226,012.21. There was a total delinquent collection of $42,110.94, more than last year. As of July, there was a total $103,537.75 of the projected current taxes to be collected. The Tax Office has collected 100% of the projected delinquent collections. Projected delinquent collections remaining are zero. Do you have any questions for the Tax Office Report or the Tax Department?
Any questions?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Cynthia.
Okay. Do you like me to go over the Motor Vehicle Department report, or it's just self-explanatory?
Yeah, I think it's... That one is very clean.
Okay. And any questions on that one? Okay, what about the Special Inventory? It's self-explanatory as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have a good day.
County Clerk, Mr. Gonzalez?
Morning, Judge Commissioners. Reports in front of you for the month of September, we did really well. We're about 10,000 more than last month. We'll see an uptick in stuff coming in because of the marks and brands that we're doing now. Every month, people are coming in daily. So, we're going to see an uptick from here to February of next year, that we'll see some more in money coming through. We'll try to put it out again through the paper in a couple of months here, just to remind everybody that it's on there. But it is online. They can print it out through the county's website, through the county clerks, and print out the form, and then just bring it in. If they can't bring it in, they can call, and we can take a payment over the phone. But we collected $42,022.25. $23,000 was the county clerk, and I'm just highlighting a couple of them. Records Management was $7,476. Copies was $1,757, and Records Archives was $7232. That's the money that kind of stays with us. The rest goes out to the state in the different fees. But we did have a really good month last month.
The county clerk's fees, what is that mainly consistent?
The county clerk, that's what we're getting in the filings. So, $26 for the first page, and then four each additional. So, a certain portion goes to the county, and then the rest, we kind of, five dollars here, five dollars there.
So, the 23, most of that goes to the county?
Yes, yes, because you'll see it where we have Records Management and Records Archive. It's already broken up from those $23,000. So, it's already broken up, and then whatever's going to the state. So, that 23 is going straight to general, as well as the copies. That goes straight to general as well. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sheriff's Department?
Good morning, Your Honor, Commissioners. The projected revenues for September 2021 for the City of Uranda were $450. The City of Roma, $60. AUSA Solutions, $1,500. Marshal Transport Services, $7,581. Marshal Medical Services, $386. Marshal Services for Housing, $62,755. Hidalgo County Sheriff's Office, $179,760, for a total projected revenues of $252,492.92. The count for October the 4th was, on that day, there was 39 federal inmates, 92 Hidalgo inmates, and 75 local inmates, for a total count of 206. The monthly average was 43 federal inmates and 105 Hidalgo inmates. The difference between September of 2020 to September 2021 was an additional $36,592. The end-of-year increase from this year to last year was an increase of $721,623, more than last year. The excess projected revenue was at $625,971, from the $2.7 million that was expected. That is my report.
Any questions, comments? Again, thank you so much. You all are doing a great job, and I certainly appreciate it. It makes my life a lot easier.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. International Bridge?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This is the revenue for September 2021. The total revenue from traffic is $164,560, and we show an increase of $68,427 for the month of September 2021 compared to the month of September 2020. And we show also an increase of $7,367 on collections for the month of September 2021 compared to the month of August 2021. And we have the excess of $157.95. And the total collection for September 2021 is $164,717.95. And on your second page on the report, sir, on the comparison report, we have the total collections from traffic for fiscal year of 2019, 2020, compared to the month of... I mean, to the year 2020, 2021. We have a decrease of $100,138.50, I'm sorry, and excess for the whole year of 20... It's supposed to be 2020, 2021, $417.04. And we have a grand total for this past year, 2020, 2021, of $1,737,188.54. Do you have any questions?
One question.
Yes.
I'm looking at this.
Okay.
If I read it correctly, from 1920 to 2021...
Uh huh.
Our pedestrian was the one that had the... Well, it had a really good increase to 20... Almost 2,600?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the autos also went up about 18,000.
Yes, they went a lot up.
That's real good. The trucks is the one that went down?
Yes.
Those are trucks that are southbound, right?
Right.
Not coming?
No, not coming in.
I'm glad people are starting to go across. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Treasure?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. You have my report for the month of September 2021, and if you just follow along with me, the ending balance for the General Fund is at $2,202,150.54. The total for the Rotten Bridge, the ending balance is at $676,892.55. The ending balance for the Enterprise Funds is at $565,243.39. For the Drainage District, the ending balance is at $3,255,385.59, which brings a grand total to ending balance to $6,682,671.87. That's my report.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalez, would it be fair to say that our fund balance, if we take out the drainage, because that's earmarked?
Yes.
Would be around 3.4, 3.5, about three and a half million?
I haven't done the math, Your Honor, but yes, I've entered it. Yes, that's about right, yes.
Anything else, Liti, that we're going to fund balance? And this is a running total?
This is a snapshot as of Wednesday of last week, yeah.
That's good.
I'm more than sure.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Pettis asked that we table his report? Is that correct? Yeah, because he was going to be out.
We have to table, Your Honor.
Moved in second. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Moving on, we'll move on to item number 12. This is an action item, and this is the Sheriff and Constable fees, Mr. Gonzalez?
Let's say the same from last year, please.
Same as last year?
Yeah, just...
Is there a motion?
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 13 is the investment policy for fiscal year 21, 22, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to have it approved, so I can have it in place for this fiscal year. It's the investment policy for the county.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Okay, and item 14 is also an action item, and this is to approve the investment report. The other one was a policy. This is the report for the fourth quarter ending September of this year?
Yes, Your Honor. That is correct.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Item 15 is an action item. This is to engage Raúl Hernández and Company for CPA services and the auditing services for the year ending September 30, 2021. This was replaced by Mr. Pettis. What this is, is that this gentleman has... And Liti, correct me if I'm saying anything that's wrong. Has committed that he can get the 20 audit. If our office can give him everything by the end of November, he will have it by the end of December, and that should get us off the hook.
That is if.
Yeah. Yeah. But, I mean, that's the best hope we have, so...
Well, I just move, you know? We need to get this thing done. Hopefully, it can happen.
Second, Your Honor.
I hope so, too. I have a motion in second, discussion? Yes, ma'am? Oh, for September ending, September 30, 2020?
Yes.
Okay. That correction is noted. Is your motion still stamped, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
In a second. Okay, moved in second. Thank you. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 16 is along the same lines, and this is for auditing services. Because this is the same thing. Oh, okay, so this would be for the bridge, and the gas would be the next one?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, so is there a motion to approve hiring Mr. Hernández?
I just move, Your Honor.
Second. Moved in second for the gas and the transfer station. Or, I'm sorry, the gas and the international bridge. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And item 18 is also the engagement of Guillermo Reina CPA for accounting services. I don't know what that is, Liti. Oh, so that's what he mentioned about hiring someone?
Yes.
In-house? Okay.
Do some move, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 19 is an action item, and this is to adopt a resolution designating the reinvestment zone, which we had a public hearing at the beginning. I believe you all have copies of that.
I just move, Your Honor.
I second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. You know, just that... You know, just a tidbit of information. I was talking to Ms. Benavides about all these companies that have come into the community, and she tells me that since the wind energy started, all the green energy, there's been a total of investment in Starr County of over $3 billion. That's what has been invested. So I mean, this has been a real lifesaver. That's the reason that this year, we were able to give raises. We were able to lower our tax rate. We're able, you know, and of this, we've given a lot of abatement. But hopefully, that will pay off once those abatments end. And it's paying off right now. I mean, it's valued to the county. Again, just tidbit. Did I call for the vote?
Yes.
I did? Okay. Moving on to item number 20. This is to approve a budget from the Starr County Self-Help Center in the amount of $700,000 for contract number 7219013.
President, moving.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 21 is to approve a resolution from the Department of Agriculture on the delivery meal grant. Ms. Malisela?
That is correct, Judge. This is just a resolution for the county cash match of $2,081. Right now, we don't have the amount of the application. It is due at the end of November pending the 2020 audit.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
To approve.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 22 is an action item, and this is to approve the consolidating of early voting election date, voting sites for the November 2nd constitutional amendment election. John?
Good morning, Mr. Court. You all should have the recommended sites in your outlook. Do you have any questions?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 23, also an action item, is to approve the election workers for November 2nd.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, John. Item 24 is a possible action item, and this is to establish a fiscal year 22 county 4E contracts with CBP.
CPS, Your Honor.
I'm sorry?
No, CPS.
CPS, I'm sorry. I really don't know what this is about. I hadn't seen him until I walked in today. But I, you know, just as I was glancing through him, I do have some questions. One of them, I don't know if you all have copies of these or not? But one of them calls for estimated total expenses available to Title 4E, total anticipated federal reimbursement, and then total anticipated county match. And the county match comes out to $283,000. You know, there's no way that we can do that. Until that is clarified to me. Then the other thing that I noticed is on the distribution of salaries. It's 100% for a county, assistant county attorney and a lead assistant, which is fine. That money is for that. But then it calls for 25% going to the county attorney. I don't know if we can do that. It'd be like me asking our federal and state programs to ask for a grant, and in there, I say, well, so much is for me. You know, I just don't think that's correct. So I would like to table this until I have a chance to talk to Mr. Canales or Mr. Pettis.
Okay.
I have motions or second?
Second.
Second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 25 is a donation. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have motions or second?
Second.
Second. Honorable fair, please, aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 26 through 42 are budget amendments. Luthy, are there any?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 43 is a budget correction. Is that in order?
Uh, yes, sir.
43, budget correction.
Those are all in order, with the exception of number 36. That's a duplicate from last January.
I'm sorry, 36 is what?
Uh, the budget amendment, I, number 36. That's a duplicate from last January.
Okay, well, we'll approve it again. We already did and voted on it. Okay, so the budget correction is in order. Is there a motion to approve item 43?
Second. Move?
Motion to...
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. It is 11:10, and pursuant to section 551.074 and 551.071, we will go into executive session to discuss order of salaries, ASO billing claims, and to get legal advice from counsel. We'll be out shortly. It's 11:45, and we're back in open session. First item we discussed was order of salaries.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item that we discussed was the ASO, and that was just information, so no action needed. And 46, is there a motion to authorize me to go ahead and sign off on that?
Motion to authorize.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second, Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, General Counsel.